It is 10:01. Good morning. This is College Station ISD Board of Trustees President Michael Schaefer. This meeting is called to order and I declare we have a quorum of seven members present. On March 16th Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. For more information about this suspension see Tasby Legal Services article titled Texas Governor Suspend Certain Provisions of Open Meetings Act Due to the Coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. Number two, we are meeting by use of the Zoom software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. Number three, as we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice by submitting public comments via email two hours prior to the start of this meeting, I will read the comments into record before or during the board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. Number five, a video recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. Number seven, if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. At this time, we will move to item C1 reports. We will have a superintendent's report related to an update regarding COVID-19. For what I, for that, I will turn over to interim superintendent Mr. Mike Martindale. Mr. Martindale?
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, board members and guests. An update on a few items since we last met. First, first, I wanted to make note that we've been speaking of our at-home learning website last few weeks ago. We got that up a couple of weeks ago. We're entering week three with that. I didn't want to mention that Dr. Trammell, our chief academic officer, is actually presenting that through a meeting at the Service Center tomorrow to the other school districts in Region Six ESC, just as an example of what we have and have provided as far as at-home learning and the resources we have posted. So, want to make note of that because I know a lot of people have put in a lot of work with getting that website and page up. Each and every week, we update that. So, just note that that's an example that Dr. Trammell will be sharing ours as an example at the Service Center tomorrow, at Region Six Service Center meeting tomorrow. Meal distribution, we continue with that. The meals served last week on Monday was just over 2,000 meals. On Tuesday, a little over 1,800 as well. On Wednesday and Thursday, a little bit over 1,800. And last Friday, we did 1,769. Today, we have served 22,993 meals. So, kudos to all of those folks that make that happen for our kids in our community. I do want to make note that this Friday, Good Friday, is a holiday, so they will not be serving meals on Good Friday, but they'll give the folks an additional meal when they come through on Thursday to account for that. Schoology usage, which is something we touched on last week as well. So, and Ms. McAdams' question was unique student login last time when we visited. I'm going to go back to week one and discuss unique student login. Week one of at-home learning with Schoology, this is grades nine through 12. We had 95.27% of our enrolled high schoolers log in to Schoology. For seventh and eighth grade, we had 91.45% of those students. Fifth, sixth grade, 73.68%. And at the elementary K through four, we had 10.97%. And then that would reflect how much Schoology is used during the course of the regular school year. That was week one. This past week, we just wrapped up for unique student logins, grades nine through 12. We had 94.28%, so just about 1% less. Seven through eight, we had 84.3%, so a bit of a drop with our seventh and eighth. Five, six went up to 74.99%, so just a little bit more login from our intermediate. And this is interesting because it kind of looks like a transition. Some K through four went from 10.97 to 18.51. So, you're starting to see a little more of the elementary kids log in to Schoology. And I would suspect through the course of this week, week three, when a lot of assignments and submission work are becoming required, that those percentages probably will creep up some more for us. But when we have these at the end of the week, then I'll make sure and share them with the board. We try to monitor this, make sure the engagement online through our Schoology platform.
I have a question about that, though. Are you finding, are you able to figure out that the elementary students, it's because there's less logging in, maybe also because they're logging in through their parents' account or their parents are logging in for them?
That is possible. I didn't, the parent logins at the elementary level from week one to week two did, this is cumulative logins. So, the number of parent logins at the elementary level from week one to week two did drop from 3,600 to about 3,200. So, I think more of the kids are logging in as opposed to their parents at the lower grade level. I think that's where the switch is coming.
Right, right.
But again, that would make sense because our elementary kids were not using Schoology near like our secondary kids. So, I think it kind of reflects them becoming a little more accustomed or starting to use that resource a little bit more. And of course, I mentioned all this, we're still providing the kind of our low-tech option packet pickup in addition to this, just for families that make that choice. Some more Schoology. This is, this is the total, so it's not a unique login. But again, week one, for example, student logins total 23,483 and week two was 24,075. So, had maybe at the high school, a percent fewer kids, but those that are logging in logged in a few times more. Parent logins did drop considerably from week one to week two. This, again, is cumulative login. It's not unique. So, that's why there's such a shift in the numbers, 7,300 to 6,200. This is interesting. Teacher logins went from 3,092 to 3,355. So, I think that's more of our teachers transitioning to their individual teacher folders as opposed to one like cumulative grade level folder in Schoology. Student interactions, week one, 120,617. Week two, 126,871. So, more interactions from our students. Parent interactions from week one to week two, 27,193 to 26,228. And then again, and this last one, I think this shows us transitioning a little more to the distance component. Teacher interactions, 15,820 to week two, 19,417. So, I find, I'm a former math teacher, so I kind of find numbers interesting. So, you have to apologize with me boring you with the data, but I think we can kind of, it just helps us see some things, to be cognizant of. So, that's why I share that with you. So, that is-
And if I could just comment on particularly the unique logins, I really appreciate looking at that data. And I know it's not perfect, but the 95% for the nine through 12 is a pretty good number in my eyes. I mean, that they're actually being able to access through the Schoology directly, getting their assignments and being able to interact with teachers. I think that's fantastic. And of course, I'm not really surprised that the other numbers are so much lower because there's the other option for just the website access to the material for the K through eighth grade, which I, which by the way, I have one of those children, has also been very easy to access and use. So, I know we can't really gauge how many, or you can tell me, can we gauge how many kids are accessing their learning through the website uniquely? Or that's probably, we're going to be really difficult to-
I don't think so. I know that at our five, seven, and, excuse me, five through eight this week, they were really trying to, what we've had in the previous two weeks is, for example, the student go into Schoology, there would be a fifth-grade math Schoology folder. So, it wasn't unique to their particular teacher. So, they go in and do that, that lesson for fifth-grade math. What we have transitioned to this week is if I, as a fifth grader, go in, then I see my math teacher, Mr. Martindale, individual folder. So, we've kind of transitioned from a big broad folder to the teacher folders, much like you see at the high school. And we made that transition of five to eight. So, that's why I think these interactions probably will bump up quite a bit, especially in the middle grade levels next week. We've transitioned to what it more looks like on Schoology at the high school level. So, they're getting in specific interactions with their, their specific teacher at this beginning this week. So, I think that'll, it'd be interesting to see, Ms. McAdams, what that does to our numbers. I think that will move it. And by the way, 95% of our secondary student enrollment is over 3,700 kids. So, when you kind of process it like that, that's a lot of kiddos accessing that as a tool.
I like the interaction numbers, Mr. Martindale, because like at our house, we just leave Schoology. We log in and we just leave it open. We just leave that tab open on our computers. And also, do we know how many packets are being picked up? Because, I mean, last week for my elementary kiddo, we tried that. We went that route to see if packets, if the physical packet was better for her rather than going through Schoology.
I did not, Ms. Nolan, ask the principals for counts on paper packets last week. So, I can in the future, just to kind of have a grand, they know what they're preparing each week. I did not ask them for that grand total number.
We liked that option. So, thank you for giving that one as well.
Well, again, kudos to our CNI, our principals and our teachers for, for planning and coordinating those things.
Mr. Martin?
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
How, how will the packet pickup work now that for the younger kids, it's more class-specific as opposed to grade?
There will, there will still be that the lessons are built off a common standard. So, those packets will reflect that baseline lesson. And so, their enrichment would be available beyond that in their specific teacher folders. But there's a guaranteed baseline lesson across the board that's consistent, and that's how we build the packets.
So, that'll say the same?
Yes.
Got you.
What it does, here's another piece. So, you're getting a lot of like Schoology lessons. So, I apologize. But we've kind of transitioned each week as we've watched the interactions to try to up the capability. It has tremendous capability. So, we're just trying to progress forward with that each week. So, for example, and I'll use my son, seventh grade. When Cooper would log in to Schoology the last two weeks and go in and be seventh-grade math, there's a common math baseline lesson. He could go in and do that, and it would drop it into a seventh-grade math folder for all the seventh graders. And so, a teacher would have to go look for Cooper, his teacher, kind of give him feedback on his, she'd have to sort through all that to get that. Now, he's transitioning in to when he goes in, you'll see his, when he goes in, he'll see his specific lesson to his seventh-grade teacher now. So, that will allow more, I think, direct feedback specifically from the teacher through the Schoology tool. So, but the packets are, there's a foundation to everything they're putting in that folder right now. I'm going to transition to devices. I know that today and tomorrow, the technology department's been working with our middle school and high school principals. So, I know they're distributing technology to those folks that have communicated with the campus at the seventh through 12 level. And that should be, actually, I think middle school is scheduled up for tomorrow. High school is occurring now. And once they handle that, then Mr. Hutchinson, his crew, be transitioning to the five, six campus, which should be, begin through the course of the mid, the middle of this week. And they'll look and see those that have, you know, communicated a need for some technology and be able to coordinate and distribute those as long as we have the resources. But I think we're tracking okay right now. The Wi-Fi, and I think I've shared some of this information with you. We're looking at expanding our Wi-Fi capability around a number of our campuses. So, if anybody's having issues with data or capacity, they could just go park at one of these seven campuses and pick up our Wi-Fi in the parking lot to help them out. And that is being done as we speak. So, when that's final and up and going, then I'll communicate with the general public that it's in fact ready to go. So, technology's working on that as well to provide another resource for the community. Trying to think. I didn't want to mention this, our nurses. Kudos to those folks. They've donated their extra gloves and masks to our local medical providers. That would be 43 boxes of gloves and 14 boxes of mask. And so, just kudos to those folks because we want to support the rest of the community in whatever manner we, we can. So, with that being said, Mr. Schaefer, that kind of brings me to closure on just the updates of the going zone at this point.
Do we have any other questions from board members? With no further questions, we will move to item D, hearing of citizens. Do we have any emails?
No, sir. We did not.
Okay. If there's no emails, we have nothing to read into public comment. So, we will move to item E1, business. Item E1 is consideration, discussion, and possible action related to a resolution of the board regarding delegation of certain authority to the superintendent to act in place of the Board of Trustees as identified in the resolution during emergency school closure due to the COVID-19 emergency. Mr. Martindale?
Okay, board members. I thought I would just go point by point through the resolution and talk our way through these. Again, this is during the, these times, just things are happening rather quickly. And this allows us some decision-making authority without us having constant Zoom meetings to do business. So, looking at the resolution, I'll start with number one, the authority to alter school calendar by changing, adding school hours, work days as necessary during the closure. An example of this that I think I've mentioned to several of you, an example of this one is, for example, Monday, next Monday, April the first, in our school calendar is a staff development day. We're going to, I can designate that as an instructional day. We're not in school. Instruction will be going on, so on and so forth. I can modify the school calendar, that date that we adopted for 1920 as an instructional day. Otherwise, we're going to serve meals on Monday. And since it's not considered an instructional day in our current calendar, we would not be eligible for reimbursement of those meals that are served. So, me designating that as an instructional day and changing our school calendar allows us to be reimbursed for those meals because we actually want to do that. So, that's an example of what this particular piece would do. Also, for example, I think May 25th is a holiday. You know, if we, if we go back, do we need that as an instructional day? Or if we're still online, I can designate it as an instructional day as well to serve meals, just as the same example I've used for April the 13th. So, those are kind of a few examples as to what this particular thing, it allows me to alter the calendar that we adopted last fall for those types of things. Number, number two and three are related to leave type things. Number two, for example, is if an employee is diagnosed or has to go into quarantine. If it's a teacher and they're supporting lessons online and they're unable to do that, or if we go back to school and someone has to miss due to quarantine, then this gives us the discretion not to pull those days missed from their, their local sick leave because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Just allows us to work with the leave policies due to COVID-19. I wouldn't want to take a bunch of leave days from an employee because they became ill with COVID-19 because that could absolutely deplete their, their leave bank. Number three is similar, thinking more along the lines of like FMLA. We were actually considered closed the week after spring break while things were transitioning. So, if we had employees on FMLA during that time, we would not deduct that leave from them simply because we weren't pulling leave from anyone during that time of closure. So, those are just examples, allows us to make some decisions associated with leave during this time. Number four, the authority to act in place to suspend or modify timelines for local grievance processes. We have an articulated grievance process and those do have time components in them. This just allows us to suspend those, those timelines while we're closed, to be able to address those more in person in conferences when we are able to come back. So, it doesn't, it doesn't dismiss the grievance or anything of that nature. It just kind of puts the timeline considering our circumstances. Number five, the authority to submit waivers to TEA. A couple of examples, missed instructional days, we'll need to submit waivers for the missed days and those types of things. This also says like low attendance. So, maybe we go back to school, our attendance rate is significantly low because people are still hesitant to come back. Then we could submit waivers to waivers from those attendance rates during that time. Another one is also, here's, this is a perfect example, T-test, the Texas Teacher Evaluation System, that would, summative evaluations would be occurring at this very, very time right now during the course of the year. And what one waiver TEA allows is that we still have the summative conference, but the number of walkthroughs and the final, like sit-in classroom observation component can be waived. And we use all the data we've collected up to the closure. So, instead of coming to you every time, I need to submit one of those particular waivers, this just allows me to submit those. And number six is similar. I don't have a particular one of these, but I was getting positioned in case there would be a need for any type of waiver from a national standpoint, you know, FEMA or anything along those lines. Progressing forward, any questions on the six of those yet? Okay. And, and I will reiterate, and on record is, these are, these are absolutely for only during the time of which we are closed. So, I think everyone understands that, but I'll go on record for that. Number seven, to the extent permitted by law, the authority to act and place the board under policy EI Local and to modify those provisions, authority modify local student grading guidelines contained in the student handbook. So, we have grading guidelines that are published at the beginning of the year. Those grading guidelines now articulate how teachers weigh grades, the number of grades they need to take through the course of the year. I'm in the, this would allow us to modify that, obviously, because our fifth and sixth, six weeks at the secondary level and our fourth nine weeks, which is just getting underway at the elementary level, our circumstances are completely different. So, we've been working with principals quite a bit on a draft of what those modified grading guidelines would look like. And we should be finalizing those probably as early as tomorrow so that we can communicate those adjustments for the fifth and sixth weeks out to our parents. So, I will, let me mention this because this is one particular bucket. We would report grades for the fifth and sixth weeks and look, it'll be different than how we calculated things through the first four weeks. And we're looking to adjust, you know, the number of grades and some flexibility and how we're weighting things so that we can take into account all the circumstances that we're dealing with. This would be for report card grades and for credit purposes only. And I'm kind of leading my way up to number eight. So, number seven, altering the grading guidelines and setting grades for report cards are one thing and applying those to, of course, credit. So, when you give credit for courses and promotion purposes and those types of things, that's one piece. Then moving into number eight, and I'm going to go to 8B first. And it says, "The calculation of GPA and determination of class ranking for all students taking courses in high score or college credit excluding members of the senior class," which we'll talk about, that's 8A. And just as noted above, "to exclude, exclude grades awarded during the spring semester of 1920." So, because of us adjusting our grading guidelines after the four, six weeks right here in the semester, all the different things that folks are going to vary in circumstances, how much technology is available, how much support do they have at home, those types of things, then what we would recommend is that the grades earned for the second semester not be a part of the GPA calculation for our students that are acquiring high school credit. That way, we're not placing anyone an advantage or disadvantage as far as their GPA calculation, which would influence their class rank and graduation honors and all those types of things. So, so understand assigning, modifying the grading guidelines for report cards and those types of things, you know, to get course credit. However, You know, to get course credit, however, from a GPA standpoint, we would not include, uh, the second semester grades uh, in GPA calculations for our students. We think that's the, the fairest thing to do considering uh, the circumstances that everyone's going through, trying to take in account, you know, all the individual circumstances that could influence, um, how kids could do and how that could grade point and, uh, we don't want to do that. Uh, now I'm gonna switch gears to the seniors because it's a little bit different. Those folks are trying to get graduated, they're right here on the home stretch. For seniors, the calculation of the GPA for purposes determining final class rank, graduation honors, like cum laude designations. Current year seniors class graduating of twenty twenty would be based on grades available for the most recent grading period. When we began wrote remote instruction, February twenty first and exclude grades awarded during the final two grade periods. So for seniors, we would go ahead and capture that four, six weeks because we were still in school. We typically, uh, calculate graduation honors and cum laude and those types of things at the fifth, six weeks. Anyway, grabbing this four, six weeks for seniors is, is just that much closer to the end for them. And this is the end as far as graduation, we have to kind of run that calculation a little bit. And, and we have to run that, uh, outside of our, our system because our system really assigns grade points and stuff by semester. So, um, we're just trying to get that as close to that fifth, six weeks in, into the year as possible for our seniors. Considering this is, this is the end for them. But for all others, we would, um, uh, take the grades from the spring semester collectively and not apply to their GPA so that, uh, we're as equitable as possible considering all of our circumstances. That's a lot, GPA, class rank, seniors, everyone else and grades, that's a lot to process. But I think then two buckets, one is course credit bucket. We asked about the grading guidelines piece, working with principals to kind of adjust that to assign grades for the fifth and six, six weeks. And that would apply to course credit, so kids still need to, you know, pass those six weeks to get credit for their, their course. Second bucket is GPA class rank type of stuff. So everyone outside of seniors, we wouldn't use those grades uh, in their GPA calculation because we don't want to promote or penalize anyone based on their resources this semester. And for seniors, we would run that through the four, six weeks, we typically run it through the fifth anyway, we're just trying to get them as close to the end as possible. If we took seniors and backed them up to semester, then we could very well shift the order of class rank and what honors, we'd be going backwards on that group. And this is the end for them, everyone else has at least another year of grades and GPA calculations after this semester. So that's a whole lot, wanna stop, uh, for questions. We've, uh, talked a lot with our high school principals on this, a, a whole lot. They know what I'm discussing here today. Um, and it's the, the draft for the grading guidelines, they're working with the principals at all the different levels and they know we're gonna be working to finalize those and communicate that out, uh, by tomorrow afternoon, because we're, principal meetings are scheduled for tomorrow morning. So there, there's the resolution and, and components that we're, um, asking for approval in the resolution today, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Is there any public comment? Did we receive any emails in regards to this?
Uh, no, we didn't, I didn't receive any emails, public comment from anything. And I will make this comment, Mr. Schaefer. You know, this is, uh, a different time and I think that, you know, every district may approach this a little bit differently. So I, I think, uh, what we're presenting is, uh, again, uh, through the collective conversations of our, our high school principals and those folks, uh, regarding the grade points. Uh, I think it is reflective of a very fair effort to have, uh, grace with our kiddos, but still have some accountability with, um, with their grades during the fifth and sixth, six weeks.
Um, do we have any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I need some, so help me out with, um, adding it, using the fourth, six weeks for the seniors. So you said that normally that's calculated through the fifth, six weeks. Um, so is this fourth, six weeks being given like a, a, a greater weight?
No, in their grade point, no, we would weight it, because you really get grade points by semester. So the four, six weeks in that calculation would be weighted as a third of a semester in their GPA. So the four, six weeks is not getting more weight, it is getting the weight of a third, which is what the six weeks is. So when we were doing it through the fifth, six weeks, it was being weighted as two thirds. Does, that make sense, Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Yeah, but we don't want to include the fifth, six weeks because of our transition at home learning and we just, uh, it, everyone's circumstance is different, but we want to grab the four, six weeks because the closer to the end we can get to seniors, we just think it adds validity to the rank in GPA.
And, and on the, can, the senior question, just to clarify, just because their grades are gonna stop at the four, six weeks, I'm assuming they still have to get credit for their classes before they
Absolutely, yes. And in our, uh, when we communicate out, Miss Mack, yeah, excellent point, Miss Mack Adams. Because if I'm an eighteen year old senior, I might, yeah, uh, the, the, the fifth and sixth weeks grades, that's why, you know, they still need to take care of business because they still have to get credit for the courses. Just because we're not counting them in the GPA, that really, the GPA is your class rank and class honors and those types of things. But you still, you still have to get credit for that class. So, yes, you still need to, seniors and everyone else, you know, regardless of accounting and GPA, need to finish their work up for the fifth and sixth, six weeks to get credit for the course.
Cause those grades will still be on their transcript, which for clearinghouse purposes could be a problem if they mail it in.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, the grades, you know, you have the N C A clearinghouse piece. And, uh, so they need to go ahead and have that taken care of. Uh, I would anticipate that on transcripts, we would, uh, denote, uh, the second semester to, uh, clarify that it wasn't, it, even though here's this grade, that it's not a part of the overall GPA calculation due to COVID nineteen closure. So we would denote that too on the transcript to draw that out for folks. We're, we're, you know, it's, um, there, there is no single correct answer for this. I think we, we have discussed this ad nauseam. I know the principals feel comfortable with it. I do as well, because I don't want to punish kids, but I don't want to give other kids an unfair advantage because maybe they have resources that others don't. But we need to finish and get our grades, uh, but, but, you know, not putting it in GPA, I think is the correct thing to do, just because of the disparity of all the circumstances that so many are experiencing in the fifth and sixth, six weeks.
Right, and unfortunately, T E A has not come out and said, you know, what they recommend, have they?
Uh, yes, their recommendation is grading is a local policy. And, and that, that is the direction that is provided, great, and, and, and it, and honestly, you know, it should be. So that is their direction. Uh, lots of conversation, you know, um, with the clearinghouse. The clearinghouse looks at those, you know, number grades, uh, they have not come out and said, they have not communicated a change in their practice. And, uh, if you do a letter grade, they would assign your lowest numerical grade offered by the district is what their past practice has been. They may change that considering all the situation, but, um, yes, you, you mentioned clearinghouse, Miss Nigent, so that's just a little expertise with that.
Mr. Martindale, just one other point of clarification when you were going through this. So freshmen, sophomore and juniors, their GPA will be calculated up until the semester average, I mean, to the semester, right? So it will not include the fourth, six weeks like the seniors.
Correct.
Okay.
We're, we're capturing the four, six weeks of seniors because they're graduating.
Correct.
We typically do, there's the fifth, six weeks for graduation honors and we, that we, that's ran as a separate calculation, really outside of the system for that. Uh, and since this is the end for them, we wanted to capture as many of those uh, grades we could in their calculation. Um, uh, so yes, that's the difference. Uh, typically, we, you know, through, through the rest of their high school career, GPA is ran off semester, semesters. So, so yes, the, the, the seniors would be a, a little bit different. Uh, I could tell if we back the seniors up to semester, then if kiddos were watching their ranking and those types of things through the course of January and February, then what they saw in February, we backed it up semester, it could very well shuffle the order of a couple of kids possibly. And I know lots of kids really bear down our seniors, uh, to get, to try to become eligible for those, graduation honors like cum laude and those types of things. So adding in that four, six weeks just recognizes their effort to try to get there for those that, that, uh, were working on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Martindale, are you, I, obviously, one question is about the GPA, um, which we've talked about. The second part is obviously understanding that every student needs to still get credit for their courses to either graduate or progress to the next grade. Um, and then the other piece is the grading guidelines for, for number seven. Can you share any more detail about what you expect for the grading guidelines? And maybe even just, um, clarify what has been set up to this point, even what's starting with grades, like with the at-home learning this week. Just wonder if you, are you prepared to share anymore about the grading kind of up to this point and what you see, uh, happening with the grading guideline?
Uh, the, the conversation we've had with the grading guidelines is allowing, uh, through the course of the first four weeks, there's a minimum, you know, a nine grades in the calculation. So for the fifth and sixth, six weeks, the conversation we've been having, and again, this is all draft, so, we're trying to finalize it this week, so I don't want to get into a lot of details because some of it may shift a little bit as we wrap things up. Uh, but with the resolution, we're able to, uh, get some flexibility in the number of grades that are required for the calculation. Also, it lets us, uh, consider some of the weighting options. But, uh, for the six, six weeks, we are, you know, looking at requiring a, a grade per, a course per week at least and weighting them of equal value, that's our initial conversation. Uh, the fifth, six weeks, uh, we're, uh, right now looking at all the required work from before closure. And also, uh, if, uh, folks, uh, have some at-home learning that was submitted, that, uh, teachers could could consider that in the calculation, uh, if it provides, you know, support to the students' grade. So we're, we're looking at, uh, providing a little bit of, uh, grace and, and flexibility in calculating those grades, uh, to the, to the, to the advantage of the student, to, to help students. We're not looking to rough anybody up. Uh, this is again, all based on, uh, getting a grade to assign credit and promotion and, and those types of things. And again, that, that's why we recommend not having this a part of the GPA because we're having to make this adjustment, um, and take into a, a whole lot of different considerations. I, I think, uh, Miss Mack Adams, that our principals and teachers want to do good by our students. I think they're just, uh, they want to do more and more. And so I, I think we need to allow them, uh, to, um, take a look at their kiddos and, um, uh, have some, some leeway to make decisions about supporting them with their grades, uh, you know, through the fifth and sixth, six weeks. And again, understanding this is to earn credit and we're not gonna take this grade and put it in your GPA so that, you know, with that flexibility, we're not creating complications in class rank and those types of things. But we're able to support our kids and kind of take into consideration their individual, you know, situation a little bit. Cause it's all about getting credit, not about your grade versus mine, because it won't be in GPA.
So, um, looking at the calendar, the fifth, six weeks started on the twenty fourth of February. So we really only had two weeks of actual class time in that fifth, six weeks, and then that closes out this Thursday, the night. And with everything that, that you've said, is there a possibility that the fifth, six weeks might end up just being pass fail?
Uh, that was a consideration, but I think right now we're looking at, uh, a, a number because that's what folks are more familiar with, that's how we've entered the grades, you know, the weeks prior to, uh, spring break. Uh, I think that, uh, a lot of folks do have some, uh, work even during the optional at-home learning time in school G that have value, uh, plus, uh, using that grade, again, uh, Ms. Nolan, we come back to, uh, clearinghouse is going to look at that pass fail and they're going to assign a value to it. So I think there's an advantage to having a number, uh, grade. Plus, I also think it, um, I think it increases kids' awareness and provides a, a cleaner picture as a parent if I can actually see a numerical value instead of a pass fail. Cause how are you gonna determine a pass fail? You're probably going to look at the work that's been submitted and grade it and say they passed or they didn't. Uh, so I think there's, 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 I think there's merit in the number grade. And that's, that seems to be the feeling, you know, as I speak with principals, that they're afraid if there's a pass fail, I'm talking high school at this point, uh, if it's a pass fail, that, uh, might not take it as seriously as if there's actually a, a number value.
I guess I have to push back on that a little bit from my viewpoint, because, um, I think certainly going forward as we, uh, I can see a benefit in a grade as we, you know, move forward for the last six weeks. But the previous two weeks specifically of at-home learning, we, we told, my understanding, we told students and parents that we would not be taking grades for those two weeks. So, um, just wonder if we're gonna get any pushback if we turn around and say that, you know, teachers are gonna take that into consideration.
Um, it, it was optional work, but I would think a teacher only takes it into consideration if it helps a kiddo, it doesn't hurt them. Um, tho- those were my thoughts on it.
So that may be part of the guideline that it would.
Oh, that to the benefit of a student only, is that your question, Miss Mack Adams? Yes, I, there, there is, uh, we would not consider any of that optional work to hurt a student's grades.
Okay.
Absolutely not, because it, it has been optional. I think this week, I think, uh, the high schools have told them that they need to submit the work, uh, at, at the distance learning. So they'll have some grades captured from this week as well. But that, that is, there are, those are some of the initial thoughts that, as far as the, the draft of the guidelines are going now. And we would be finalizing those, uh, again, I think we'd be trying to close that up during our principal meetings tomorrow so that we could, could let folks know. Yes, the six weeks is ending Thursday, uh, we typically, teachers don't Yes, the six weeks is ending Thursday. We typically, teachers don't typically submit grades till the first of the next week. So I think Ms. Nolan, there, there would still be some time for, know if. For, for stuff to be submitted if need be or to be considered or if teacher want to grab some, some makeup work of some sort.
I'm going to ask one other question just because I am completely unaware of what is the NCAA. Thing that keeps, is mentioned and how this is affecting us not using a pass fail for the, the grade.
Those looking for eligibility, NCAA athletic eligibility. The, their past practice is if you use a pass or fill a letter grade. Then when they calculate to determine eligibility and those types of things, they assign the lowest passing grade to that letter grade that's available in your district. So they would, under current practice, take that P and assign the seventy to that student. As they're determining their, their eligibility.
And they base eligibility for the college eligibility, they base it on a pre, on their. High school senior year or something is what you're saying. Okay, okay. But there are plenty of other high schools out there who are doing some pass fail for at least some six weeks, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll have to see how they.
Right. That is, you know, there are some doing both or some assigning number grades all the way across. Even while they're changing their grading guidelines, there are some and they're counting it in their GPA. There are some that are waiving their GPA and doing letter grades. So th- there's a combination of, of a multitude of different things that are occurring.
And I'll just finally say, I certainly recognize that this is not an easy decision and I appreciate all the. The smart people at the district and their principals discussing it to do the best thing for, for all the students. So thank you.
I, I do think. That you can slice it a multitude of different ways and it might work in one person's. Depending on the seat someone's sitting in will depend on whether they consider. The, the impact. So what we're trying to do is, is be as fair as possible across the board.
I agree. There's not a magic solution to this. I do appreciate all the time and effort you and C and I and the principals have done. I know you've checked with other schools and. Again, I think on behalf of the board, we appreciate all the work that y'all have done to investigate all the different possibilities and outcomes.
What, what I found also and other school districts have nine weeks versus six weeks. It's interesting because we have. Both in one district and that's the first I found. But you know, those things are in play as well, you know, if we were on nine weeks at the secondary level, we'd have been. Basically halfway there as far as calculation of grades and those type things for a grading cycle. We're on six weeks. So even that varies from district to district, Mr. Schaefer.
Any further discussion? I mean, those were some great questions. If there is no further discussion, do I hear a motion? Not everybody's on mute, I hope.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Resolution delegating certain authority to the superintendent to act in place of the board of trustees as identified. In the resolution during the emergency school closure due to the COVID nineteen emergency.
Miss second. Has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mike Nugent has seconded the motion. We will do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say yes or no in response. A yes means you are in support of the motion on the table. Place one, Mike Nugent, how do you vote?
Yes.
Place two, Amanda Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Place three, Joshua Ben, how do you vote?
Yes.
Place four, Jeff Horrington, how do you vote?
Yes.
Place five, Kimberly McAdams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Play six, Michael Schaefer, how do you vote? I vote yes. Play seven, Geraldine Nolan, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion passes with seven members voting yes and zero members voting no. At this point, we will adjourn and we call the meeting. Over and I just would like to say success each life, each day, each hour. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.